To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning, everybody. Good to see you all, mask and all, luckily I know who everybody is, so it's not a mystery. Uh, we'll call a meeting to order, look for motion of agenda approval, any changes or corrections?
No.
Do you know?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. We have two sets of minutes from eleven nine.
I read the table to them and they said they both look okay, so I would move to approve.
One second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Both minutes, sets approved. Any general public concern? Any general public follow in camp?
No.
No?
Hi.
Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to Alyssa.
Just perfect timing for it.
Do you want me to do it from here?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I have the same, um, similar packet. Take care, I have one for you too. Yeah.
Let me share it.
Yep, there you go. Do we need another? Okay. Um, so this year, we are of course doing-
I need one for Sandy.
Well, we can share one.
I'll put it- No, I'll put it in the drawer.
Yeah, there you go. There may be enough. Um, so this year does look a little bit different, um, in terms of our reports to you. Um, typically, we do what we call biannual report, which is bound. Um, and we didn't do that this year because we had a serious disruption. So unfortunately, what you find in your packet this time is the disaster recovery plan. Um, and that's included to give you an idea of the shift that we have taken since, um, the pandemic started. So, um, in your packet, you'll see our traditional funding request, um, in addition to our organizational statistics, both for the last five years and cumulative. In addition to our board does look a little bit different, um, as does November, so you'll find that in there as well. Um, and then you'll also find just a quick, so what I tried to do to be a little bit more positive, um, our disaster recovery plan is the bulk of what, of what we've been doing. Um, but to be a little bit more positive, I did put just kind of a quick snapshot of some of the projects that we're working on, just to show that development is still happening. It's just at a lot slower rate than what we would typically be used to. And then, of course, you have our budget. Um, so we are not increasing our requests this year, um, for the same amount that it has always been. Um, and, and would entertain questions specifically. I'm certainly happy to go through the disaster recovery plan, um, but to save you the time. I know Bruce has, I think, a couple of questions in relationship to some of our work on the P and T. So if you have some specific question, I'd be happy to entertain those as well.
I had one question, um, from someone that, the new area that you're considering buying?
Yes.
Their, their question was, when we're buying these, are you, is there that much interest in moving something or building something that we buy more property like that? And I, I don't think they're going to come out and say, well, we got ten businesses that are open to relocate, but I guess I said I would-
Yeah, so no, that's actually a really great question. So, um, we had actually approached a family about five years ago, um, interested in purchasing it or op, some sort of option to purchase, in the event that we needed it. So here, here are a couple of things that may help answer that question. We have one lot left at the Northwest Industrial Park, and that would be the one directly south of Universal Park, directly west of Sisters. So knowing we've got one there, and then out to Humble Business Park, although there's two along the highway are commercial. And then the, the section immediately south of the containment cell has to be reserved for heavy industry. So when you take that out and you take out the commercial, we would have two available lots at the Humble Business Park for general industry. So the answer to your question is, the number one request from a business is shovel-ready land. If you don't have shovel-ready land, they're not going to go buy it from Joe Q Farmer. Um, so it's a long yes, and I say that because we need to be thinking forward, and what does it look like to make sure that we have shovel-ready land? The one thing that that property boasts that we can't say for any other park is it's not platted. So if an industry were to come in today and say, I want three contiguous acres, we can do that, and we can't do that where we are now. They have to pick a lot, if that makes sense, or we'd have to go through the replating process, and we try not to do that. So that's one tremendous benefit.
Plus, it's close for utilities.
Um, so it is, it is our first mixed-use park. It is served by both Mid-American and Mism Power. Um, gas is all, of course, Mid-American. Um, and on the infrastructure, water, sewer, storm, um, we'll do that when we have our first need, so to speak. So either the business park is full, and we'll plan to do it that way, or we have that business that comes in and says, I want three contiguous acres, and then we would do right funding to support that. Yep, that's a great question.
Well, they were just curious as to why we go out and spend money when we have empty lots. They said, well, you never know, this company A is going to come in and need a bigger area than what's the plot.
Yeah, and actually, a lot happened in the last probably six, seven, eight months. Um, so if, if you can geographically, right west of Universal Park, so behind them, that was auctioned by Precision Tank, and they, they provided their notice of action, so they are purchasing that. So that's gone, which left the one lot in the Northwest Industrial Park. And we've had two inquiries on the, on the Humble Business Park, of which would take our two large acres, our two large plots. So, you know, just trying to be forward thinking.
Yeah, you should add a plan ahead, because like you say, if you don't have the dirt, they're not going to come.
No, no. I mean, they're, they don't know the lay of the land to be able to say, who's Johnny Farmer, and no, absolutely not. No, that would, that would take us on the running completely.
All right.
I have a question on the budget numbers. Uh, a lot more budget than, than income.
Absolutely.
Pretty simplistic. And what happened to the partners program? That's not, there's a zero in the twenty-
Yeah, so we put that in there, um, Eric, because we are just now closing that out. So the partners program is where businesses pay to invest in Humble County Development.
Mm-hmm.
And at the creation of those budgets, they were, we, we did-
So you did get money from that?
We did, we did. We, we've collected about thirty thousand.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you're in pretty decent shape moving forward?
Yeah, we did receive, um, we had a, a serious disruption this year. Because we had a business development specialist, um, and we couldn't collect dues from businesses that were shut down, obviously. So, um, we did receive a grant from the Economic Development Authority to offset the loss for the fiscal year we just completed.
Okay.
Yep.
So essentially, then, it, the numbers are all better than the-
Oh, a lot better than they did the fiscal-
Because I mean, I'm not a CPA by any stretch, but if you just look at, there's a deficit right off the bat.
Absolutely.
There's not really a deficit.
Absolutely. And we do, I mean, we're a nonprofit, so our goal is not to make money.
Right.
So we never have a large amount to ask.
Right.
Um, the fiscal year will just-
Basically, provide opportunity.
What's that?
And we provide opportunities.
Absolutely. I mean, we're not here to make money.
Right.
So, um, the fiscal year we just ended, though, we had additional expenses that we could offset because we certainly couldn't request. Normally, we would request our partners program at the beginning of the calendar year. And we didn't have the opportunity to do that, so, yeah.
Okay, so it's not all doom and gloom.
No, we feel a lot better than we did. Our board meetings in, in May and June were a little bit rough, but yeah, no, we're, we're feeling a lot better, yeah.
Well, that's all. Anybody else got any particular questions?
Perfect, thank you.
So thanks for coming up.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd appreciate the update.
Do we have some answering questions?
I don't, I guess I'm not, I'm not really sure what I can bring up until-
Nope, that's fine. I just wanted to answer any of you think we have any.
No.
Otherwise, you guys know where to find me. I haven't moved in, you know, eleven years, so.
You did move across the hall.
What's that?
You did move across the hall.
That's true, I did, I did move across the hall, that's true. But that's what Caitlin is there, she didn't point in the right direction. So if you need anything, you know where to find me. Otherwise, have a good day.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
All right. Moving right along, looks like we have Diane and Diana for the Wellness Committee Discussion Action Plan for next year.
We're here to request to continue our county wellness program at Direct Center. And put together, um, a handout.
I gave each of you a copy. Sandy, I did email you yours, I hope you found it. Wellness Committee saying, Sandy, did you find it in your email? If not, um-
You're muted, is that?
Oh, it's been answered.
Please start.
Let me write it down.
I got it. Okay, great. So the-
It's the twenty-five.
The first page is kind of what we wanted to try to start a policy per se as to what the Wellness Committee, what Rec Center portion of the Wellness Committee is. And the Rec Center is now changing their expenses or the cost for memberships for the next year. But if you look at the third page, they are giving us a two-and-a-half month discount for those of us that were members last the current year because of the time they were shut down. So then, our thoughts would be that the county EBS funding would be reduced by that same two-and-a-half months, and the employee would pay the balance over the full year. So we would still pay upfront, get five percent discount, and we have different amounts owing for new people that want to be a part of it than, than those that are currently. And you said the numbers have stayed pretty consistent?
Yeah, we had twenty-four in two thousand nineteen that joined at the start, changed a little bit as the year went by, and we had twenty-seven, um, employee members last year.
So the, um, when you look at the memberships, there's a single family, a senior couple, and a senior. And the senior rate starts, or take off act if you turn sixty-five in the year, in the calendar year.
Or if your spouse does.
Yeah, if you go with a senior couple.
Always one or the other.
Yeah. So in, in that case, um, the employee benefit portion covers their costs. Other than the senior couple, we pay one sum, we're not going to deduct. They divide that fifty-four dollars and fifty cents or the sixty-nine dollars out over twelve months. So the senior portion would have to be paid upfront. I mean, that's-
That's a huge difference. I'm not willing to be sixty-five to save that money, but that's a huge difference.
We had sixteen-year couples last year, I think it was.
The Rec Center offered that thing.
No, I'm just saying that it's huge for-
Well, it's to get, I mean, that's what it's for, so people get off.
Right. And then, um, going back to the first page, the policy type issues. Um, we wanted to limit the number of times people can join, even if you're a new employee. So we'll have open enrollment in November, December of each year, and then a second enrollment in July for any new-
Only new members.
You know, because it's kind of a-
Employees, new employees.
Yeah. And co-keeping nightmare to add and subtract. I mean, there is a penalty for leaving, so that avoids the, the people quitting on us during the summer months. Um, number four, or number three is, um, the deductions. And then the fact that if you leave employment, then you pay for the remaining amount owed the county, but you keep your membership.
All right.
And we had that happen once, I think, the last year.
It wasn't an issue, so that's, that's, she understood. And number four is if you, um, leave the area or decide you don't want to go anymore, you, your membership just stays there. They don't, the Rec Center doesn't give refunds, so we're not going to either. And since the county pays upfront, it's got to, it's going to stay there. Oh, and then the very first paragraph talks about, like we had last year, every other year, that you have to be a member of the health, county health insurance to qualify. So if you just have a single membership and your family wants to join, if you just have single health policies, then they don't qualify.
It's amazing how many things came up in the first couple of years.
I think we're thinking about-
It sounds like really simple, and then all of a sudden, you go over and everything come up.
Sounds like you've got sorted through most of those discrepancies, so you've crossed them.
People aren't liking everything what we've put together, but-
I don't know, I think it's a pretty darn good deal.
Yeah. I think you've done a great job.
And I appreciate all you've done.
Yeah, from the inception, it was just a, a, offer a cost share for a, a membership, and that's what it is. And, I mean, that's a pretty good deal. It's a very good deal.
Agreed.
And maybe a whole, hopefully, a bit of an incentive for people, but-
But we do have a form of agreement. Chairperson needs to sign. Give to the Rec Center.
And we have to, um, let them know who's going to be involved in twenty-one.
You know, we have, we'll send out an email to everybody, get signed up by December fifteenth.
Let me get a copy of that before you send it back, please.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a folder with it. And I have also like a copy of that.
You didn't get one of those?
If anybody has questions, we'll have that in the emails, get ahold of Diane, I, or friends.
So you prefer, it looks like end of year to sign up, your, your sign-up period now? Now through the end of the year is the easiest?
Yeah.
Then it's for all of next year now?
By December fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the Rec Center deadline too.
And like, well, the first year we did it, I did join in December, but that was my own expense. The county stuff started January first, and that's something worked out with the Rec Center.
Well, thank you, again-
The numbers stayed somewhat same, or I mean, what, I haven't been-
You mean at the Rec Center?
Yeah.
I haven't heard.
I haven't either.
I went off, they started kettlebell classes again.
And I was doing some stat expansion and whatever.
Yeah, there's some reduced numbers. If you're comfortable going, I'm not, yes.
All right.
Me, I'm a little nervous about them.
Here, don't let me take this home with me.
Thank you. Paratation stations, um, I think they've done that job of monitoring.
The home, they must be giving you back the copies.
I think some of their issues, you know, also-
No, the original copies.
Oh!
Yeah.
I have one, sorry, Eric's behind yours.
From what I heard.
Oh, sorry.
I think I did a lot of cleaning.
Yeah. Because we're taking and then remiss.
Or I put it in the closet.
Is that correct, let's check you, Diane?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so missing the-
Did you get the bath too, or the two side, I don't know if you noticed that?
Oh, do I need-
Did you notice the two side, Peggy?
Is there anything that needs, you signed on the back?
No, it's just, it's dollars again.
Well, thanks again for implementing this, because like you said, you started this, sounds simple, then there's some technicalities involved, but you work through them, and I'd still say it's a great incentive for any county employee.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
The LPR, the lesser insurance cost.
Exactly.
So thanks for putting up with the headaches.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Anything else, Diane and Diana?
No, no, yeah.
Well, we have not seen Jenny Johnson.
Um, she will not be here. She asked me to give you the copies of the brochure.
Everybody has that?
She said the libraries are very thankful for the contributions that they get from you guys, and they just want to maintain the same brochure that I asking-
Similar to what they've been doing?
They did a wonderful job being shut down and calling and putting books outside. I mean, I'm getting more books with the clothes than I did when-
Yeah, I know our little library, and it's been challenging, now it's challenging again, but they have made it available for people to get their books.
Can, you know, I think-
Really, they're not really old, but they can still, they get said, oh, here's the book, and then some libraries have book clubs, and then they make sure everyone that's in the book club gets their book. And they're, they're really an important part of our small communities, so.
Definitely.
And it's nice if they send word to us prior to budget negotiations, so. So you think we're covered on the library thing, then?
Yes, then we were fine with that.
Any questions on library business?
Should we do our COVID discussion?
Yeah.
I'm going down and grab a, let the-
You want me to get the little tablet?
Yeah, you want to go grab one of them? Which Ben is-
I guess he's not here yet, but you said he's here pretty early today.
He's just pulling up.
Well, there you go.
He can get in on that, but-
It always kind of been to be on time.
Well, I like to be in the library. Get in on that.
While you're waiting for Ben, if I could over just a couple of things with you.
Yes.
We did receive, um, orders for recertification of the union for the courthouse and for public safety. Courthouse including sheriff deputies, um, and jailers. We decertified the secondary road union and the assessor conference board, um, union. And those were effective, according to Renee, um, right away. I thought they would go with something in the contract, but we seem to think it was fairly soon, or maybe it's the end of the year, but it's, it's not the end of the contract. Wanted you to know that.
Okay.
Um, I've had a couple of calls from the people from Karash, you remember, or however you say that?
Yep.
Um, didn't know if you were interested in pursuing that, or if you want to think about it. I mean, nothing happened today, but they were just wondering, are we interested, are we not interested? You did have solutions coming in with you also, and they explained their security.
I can't, I might have authorized me with solutions, but I had good results with that for years.
You know, one service is excellent. One entity in, with that versus two.
Exactly.
I concur. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but-
Okay, here's Renee's email. Actually, the marketing agreements become null and void as soon as Purdy issues the order of decertification. Most counties keep the status quo until there's an opportunity to get them fully into the employee handbook and/or develop department policies. So that's something she said she'll be working on as she's updating the employee handbook.
Well, are we going to, Ben, since upon all your busy schedule, we were going to go through our, these everyone's here, COVID, COVID discussion. What's that?
Corey didn't get back.
Oh, shoot. Does anybody have, uh, I have Corey's number if I have my phone.
Well, we told him it'd be around nine fifteen to nine thirty.
Yeah.
The work left, I'm Peggy, if you say, well.
What about Corey, maybe?
You said what about Ben, and I turned around, and you were pulling in, and Ben's here, perfect.
All right. And of course, we want, yeah, I'm here too, so. Oh, she is, okay.
Yeah, over the back. Corey was in this morning and visited the office before the meeting, so we know his feelings already.
His feelings, yes.
I just have a memo from Sherry with the court system saying that with the cases of COVID-nineteen increasing in our area, the court administrator put together a memo, was starting, um, was last week. Their office will gather their own trash and place it outside their door nightly, and the janitor will not need to come in and clean it this time unless the practice was to do it after hours.
I texted, you can call it, call it.
Can I ask if he cares if he's here or not?
Corey, you can show him, I can put him on speaker, he must got you.
That's something to do.
Yeah, that's true.
So according to the court system-
Hey, Corey.
Don't want any-
It's first, um, are you in, are you wanting to come up here? Because we're running a little ahead, and everybody's sitting here. If you want me to put you on speaker, if you have something to say, or want to listen, or we'll wait. We'll wait two minutes. Thank you. Said he's just walking out of the office still.
I hear the sirens coming.
Well, in the meantime, I mean, we can start our discussion, that's what's printed here. We've already had a little bit of it, so whatever anyone has to say, go ahead.
Okay, if you put it on the agenda, what were you wanting to discuss?
Well, what I look at is going back, and we've already been through this once, at the onset of all this COVID business, and where we essentially locked the doors of the courthouse. So it was appointment only to get to the offices. Now, since then, have the illustrious Dropbox. And I really believe we probably need to look at going back to keeping the general public out. You know, if it's super duper important, I think I've talked about everybody in the different offices since, you know, when we started that. I know Diane said if somebody had to get in and look at recorder records, you worked out appointments with said people earlier.
Well, the, the two local abstractors are here every morning, and that's really all we're having. They're having geology, or, you know, an occasional surveyor, but-
That sort of thing, but they have to contact-
We don't have much, no.
Contact you first, so anyone would have to contact any given office that they want to get into and be up to that office to decide if that was really necessary or not, if it worked out.
My issue, we have driver's license appointment scheduled all next week, on the full week. We're booked all, every day of the week for driver's license.
What do you, what, how, what do you think about that, Diana? I know that's a big topic of discussion.
I have got to check the governor's proclamation, but as far as, I know she's not extended the expiration of driver's license in the past December.
So that might be something we still have to do by appointment, have to call in, have to walk them up, so they aren't sitting in the hallway.
But that's where I'm standing right next to them. The door's open, they can come in, we don't even have to leave, go in there inside the counter. I don't like opening the door for them.
Oh, you don't even like the driver's license people, then?
I want them to come in, I just don't want to have to open the door for them.
Okay.
They can lock their office doors if they don't want customers, but-
Like you say, rope off the ends of the hallways possibly, if that's what you like.
I don't know that there's an issue with, that, um, transfer with paper or objects and that. I thought it was all-
True. No, I- More worried about the-
It's, it's contact, it's proximity, it's there, or all that fun. So are you comfortable with the, you know, with keeping the driver's license equipment?
And the, um, if masks are required, I think should probably maybe be the protocol to do a step down and not go so drastic. That's my office, I don't want to get so drastic.
Well, because people do need to have the driver's licenses renewed.
Right.
Because if it expires, anything, I think the test over would just get more, more work for you even.
Well, there's some guidelines on testing that gives them a year leeway, but they're not legal to drive.
Yeah. Why don't you like to open the door for them, I'm, I'm kind of-
Because then we're, we're standing right next to them, and the point is to avoid personal contact. The six foot, physical distancing. If they can just come up to our office with a mask on.
But if you're in the car with them, you're still-
She's not doing drives right the moment.
Oh, not doing drives.
What, they, we've been training up until this week, or this past week, and they were wearing face shields, gloves, and masks when they trained, and then they, she did have ventilators, white, so. But yeah, the drives are scary. I mean, you're sitting in the same car with someone for ten, fifteen minutes, maybe twenty, depending on traffic. But for our office use-
What about for the other things not involved in driver's license?
Well, tax, of course, isn't busy, but people are buying cars right now.
Yeah, registration.
Mondays, we press the forty titles with mail and walk-in.
There again, uh, most, a lot of times those are mailed to you, correct? And you just do it out and mail it?
If they're dealers, yeah. The product sales-
Well, those and that, as far as safety is concerned, if someone has the documentation in hand and would normally bring it to your office, can't they put it in the Dropbox and notify you that it's? You look at that information every day.
It's doable, but it's like a three email process, because they never have the right paperwork, and then they got to sign, and we need the original staff. Yes, it's doable, but it's hard.
Yeah, but there again, that's minus the driver's license renewal stuff. The people that have registered vehicle business, that could still be by appointment. I mean, to-
My point is, I don't want to come down the door.
You don't want to come down the door.
Maybe, maybe we could just close up the other offices, leave the recorder's office open, because that's the neighbors. That's true. And require a treasurer's office.
But you still got the traffic, people being COVID.
But if you require masks, then they're-
I don't know if we can require masks.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm requiring them at my office.
I can require them.
Nobody wants to be in your office.
I was just saying, I've got a sign up that says masks are required if you come into our office.
We say strongly recommended on our door, and, um- And everybody that hasn't had one has grabbed a disposable one when they come in.
Right. I think that's the way that the wording is, is just requ, is they aren't.
Highly recommended, but then you can't, there's, you, we all know.
We have extra PPE so that each department can have a box of masks there. And she's going to be something without a mask.
We don't right now, but our Turo has them on order, so we should be getting them just anytime.
Okay.
I agree though with Janne, I felt safer behind my plastic plexiglass when a customer comes to my counter than running down, letting them in, escorting them back out. We wiped down.
Railings.
Railings up and down, and it just took time, plus you were with them. At, at that door when you opened and you let them in, and.
There you go, there you got the plexiglass and you're about six feet apart anyway, so.
With the camera in them. Yeah, and I'm in a mask in my office and.
Well, you just.
Customers are.
As the building was designed and where your office is for recorder, you probably have the safest barrier, because, you know, they can't just walk in there.
Right, they, right.
And you do have your mask, and you do have that plexiglass. I mean, and you just, I also would like to say, we can do this per office. I mean, we have the assessor sitting here. You, they, you, they can be required appointment only.
Yeah, we can, we can do it.
We can do it per office, because Diane's situation is different than Linda's and Janne's, than Peggy's. And so I can be per office. They can, obviously, you two feel that you don't like running and opening up the door for people, because then you're initiating more contact. We still, I think, need to limit the flow of people in here. And as far as I'm concerned, between, we'll just use the assessor, auditor, even engineer, you can lock your doors and it can be appointment only, and you have to wear a mask if you get the appointment. I don't know why you can't.
Is there a way Peggy that you could stand up here with a remote and unlock the door instead of have to run up and down or anything?
All done by computer.
Don't have that feature, huh? You can program the door to lock and unlock at certain times.
I'm not saying it can't be done, but.
We don't have that capability at this point.
I'm wondering if you call our Turo and have them come on.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
So, we would even leave our door open, you know, so that nobody else has touched the knob. We have signs on the wall that say only two customers at a time, and we ask them to leave the room if they happen to come in, or they come in with multiple people. They don't need three people to transact the card.
Tech team.
Transfer. Then they're all really good to listen, they just sometimes open the signs.
Well, just thinking that way, if, you know, if you could get a remote where you can unlock that door, you wouldn't have to get next to them, cause you'd get the door, let them come in.
I mean, like, like you do off to the secondary roads, you ring the doorbell and buzz, buzz them in.
That the school has on them.
Yep.
If you could do that.
To get the contact, the doorkeeper, the.
So you're talking about like getting a push button buzzer, like an intercom type thing?
Or if they call up, well, you could hit a button in your office or walk out to the hallway here and hit the button. Watch you get them seen, you wouldn't have to near them then.
Either that or it'd be simpler, like you say, just to lock the offices that want to stay locked and leave the one open, it needs to be open.
Well, that's what it's about, plus it is the amount of people and the proximity of people. I mean, you can, I'm not going to go into a deep discussion on masks, wearing, good, bad or indifferent, but we're probably going to have to request our meeting, we still meet in person, that no one else shows up, it's via Zoom. Because you still get people, you know, the mask thing is, does what it can do, but it's, it's not a fail-safe deal. It's, the less people you're around, the bigger area you've got. Janne mentioned proximity and length of time, that's how every virus spreads, so we always ignore that.
We did add a HEPA error filter to our office.
Yep. So that's the same, that's kind of an office by office, we'll consider ourselves an office. I would say that if we're here physically ourselves, no one else is, just auditor and supervisors. So how does the auditor's office feel? Would you be more comfortable with appointment only, keep people out of the office, utilize Dropbox?
I can go either way. I'm uncomfortable going down the hall even to just the ladies' room, just for the fact that there's so much traffic. And that was during election time when we had.
A lot of people.
So much people in that traffic has dropped off considerably.
We shouldn't have traffic until March, so it's half of them doing.
Yeah, it should be a slow time of the year, except for the deer tags, now that's pretty busy.
Well, you can do that online, right? Or like we are still.
We have a wheel of pressure for you.
People that are coming in are touching railings, they're touching doorknobs.
That's why I said, I mean.
Employ our Turo to do more cleaning, if we're going to continue with that, because we've already had enough people exposed up here, we need to be more careful.
And, you know, that's why we want all this input. Our question is on the door. Do you know of any way of remotely locking and unlocking that door, other than computer?
That is from Elgona. Electronic specialties in Elgona, is that what it's called? They, they did our doors.
That's who did ours, I want to say it was like two grand to install the.
The buzzer?
The buzzer in our office.
But then the difference is, is that, you know, if we get somebody coming into the back door, who knows, you know, if they want to talk to the auditor and, you know, who's going to answer the buzzer? Do we have seven or eight different buttons depending on the office?
I don't know.
I don't know how you determine.
Yeah, I don't either.
They don't know if they're going to talk or anything anyway.
Yeah, you get to tap the number down there, you call that office and somebody in that office, it buzzes in.
Just leave the buzzer in the hall or something. And I'm sorry, I'm same vein, what do I tell people when they want to use the bathroom? We know it. We get that, we get that, cause we're closest to the bathroom. We're dancing around. And I'm not going to sit them down and ask Peggy, cause that's putting them in more places, but. And, and we see people using it that haven't asked permission, that aren't employees. You know?
Gotta go, you gotta go.
Well, do I have to offer another mask? Because, I mean, I, I'll say no if I should say no when they ask us, but I've said yes a couple of times.
Yeah, I think the best thing to say is they're for employees only right now due to Covid, just telling them.
Well, when you got a little kid or something.
Yeah.
We've got a couple applying for marriage license, it's going to take a half an hour, one of them has to go. I'll send it to Casey's, I mean. Then they're really. Well, I, I feel bad saying no, cause I'm the yes person. I just don't know where, there's no close place to say that there's a public bathroom.
I think in other situations where it has, you can't, you know, there's times to have to use it. But I think we're just going to cut it down in Matt's league, we tell them no, employees only.
But then do I call a Turo and say, I just let someone sit? I mean, I, I don't know how to handle it, I guess, either.
I don't know either.
And I feel bad saying, okay.
What if, like, when the jail was, or the trial was going on, the. Sure, it's just walking downstairs, why is it necessary to use that bathroom rather than this one? The employees are using this one. And then that's the only, if it's adamantly required, we send them upstairs.
Well, you know, you maybe could, yeah, make one for public, you.
Not advertise it.
Yeah, not advertise it that way. You know, have the public use one bathroom and the employees use a different one.
I like that.
Yeah.
I like that idea, that's a good idea.
Hey, talk one up.
And crazy, little kids not to come when customers call and just say, if you can avoid it. But sometimes it's difficult.
That would be a good idea, I think.
Yeah, that way there's one available for the public and then one for employees, and then it eliminates the amount of people using that bathroom.
So where does this?
Well, let you guys decide which one's yours.
Well, it's, there's a lot of stuff floating around here. I mean, is it, can we do like a modified shutdown? Or are we going to do it per office? I mean, that's the way I look at it, door buzzer, no door buzzer.
I think you need to let the offices do it the way they want to do their own offices, myself. Cause Janet definitely needs to be open. Linda's office could be appointment only, cause it's not that busy. Diane's could be by appointment only. Uh, you'd probably have to put a, you know, you gotta definitely put signage on the door for everything and, you know, designate a public restroom and an employee use restroom and then enforce it. You know, people want to use it, they know you have to use the one wherever in the basement or upstairs or whatever. And, um.
Put a sign on the door, masks required.
Yeah, masks required.
Call office before you go up.
You. I mean, if, if you just want to shut.
You can't put, I know a lot of businesses do it, but they're public when you're, or they're private. When you're public, I don't know that you can put masks required. You can put like, Diane said, strongly suggested.
Strongly requested or something.
Yeah, without a policy.
What if you put on there, if you want your stuff done fast, wear a mask.
Right.
I said, if you want your stuff done fast, wear a mask.
There you go.
Otherwise, it might be slow.
Well, we don't have the traffic that the others do.
No, you don't.
So, um, we'll be good for a few months, that it's all, whatever, you know, it has to be reviewed up this first year.
Well, we need to get, obviously, past Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Christmas is there.
And then, I mean, so are we at the per office thing, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I think.
I think, I think that would be a good idea, leave it up to individual.
Everybody's got a little different situation, we've heard of them, most of them.
I leave it up to the individual offices.
You know, the idea, I think, of dropping however much money to get a door buzzer, I don't know if that's necessary.
No.
I still think if they make the phone call and.
Yeah.
Ask Linda or Diane or whoever, are you busy right now? If they're on Main Street, they could drive by, call, okay, I can run in and do whatever I need and get my papers. They could let them know, have it ready, they.
Yeah, yeah, the, the call ahead, way the options, I mean, you know, there's so much stuff that, that if people would pay attention to their business, that can be done by mail. Certainly can be done with the Dropbox.
Try not to wait to last minute, take your bins.
They certainly can call any of the offices to get information as to what their concerns are and, you know, so hopefully a lot of it can be handled over the phone. And then negate, what you need to do is negate the in-person contact and the amount of people like Peggy says going in and out of the courthouse, so that's the main goal of this. So.
So the front door will be left open?
Yeah, so in request to faults like Diane and Janne, where they might pay appointment only, but then if that's the case, or they have an appointment, they gotta run down, open it, or even if they have to go out, buzz it, they're probably actually defeating your purpose, cause you're going to get closer contact than if they just come up. But we need, hopefully this will alleviate, not eliminate, the flow of people in and out of the courthouse.
Yeah, it'll slow it down.
They're asking for us to slow it down, and I think that'll help. That, I mean, that's our.
I know we're going to have a very good plug in next week's paper, or this week's.
Put it on my shoulders.
You're doing all the right.
Really, people stop, stop and think about the business that you need to conduct here before you conduct it.
Big sign, mask.
And there are, there are a couple of things that, yeah, online, mail, things like that, that people should. That's, that's a good way of being proactive against it. Everyone needs to do their part, stop and think, what can I do that I don't have to go to the courthouse? Maybe I can call it and I put it, get my question answered, put it in Dropbox, put it in mail. I don't even have to show up and physically be there.
Well, in the news this morning, didn't they say the, wasn't, it was the Iowa news, the, they're still petitioning the governor to put a mask mandate into effect, so.
They were doing it for a while.
Right. But they haven't given up, so they're.
I think they're closer now to getting it than they were.
I think so too. So if that's the case, then we know it'll happen.
What's that protocol when we have a positive case in our offices or, I mean?
You know loophole, if you're wearing a mask.
Yeah, oh, we go with the CDC says.
Yep, that's the way that, and I know that from daycare protocol, not that I'm in daycare, well, some days I am, but anyways. That they have a weird thing, and they'll make these little kids wear masks, and if one of, then now they're testing everybody. They're testing little kids. And, but if everyone was wearing a mask and they test positive, they may be off one day, cleaned, whatever, and they can come back. So it's, it's kind of a loophole thing, and I know your office is doing that. If everyone has a mask, someone tests positive, but they all wear, wear a mask otherwise, then you don't shut down.
Well, and what do we tell, maybe Sandy knows this question. I mean, my staff of just two people, nobody that they live with, but my staff has had family members have it.
Sure.
So do I tell, gee, do you want to, I mean, that, that puts, anybody that's coming in my office, do we let you know that, hey, you know, we strongly recommend masks? Would we say, somebody's son just got tested, or do we live with, or we just leave all that off the board?
Leave it off the board, no.
I mean, it's risky stuff, but still it's, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I really, you know, this HIPAA law.
Yeah.
Is to protect people's rights, you know, but you don't have people to walk around with it.
Anyway.
That's the scary part.
Once we do know, shouldn't we all be notified that someone in the courthouse?
You would say so, but we can't.
But according to Avon Lorcan, who is our HR person, um, who I talked to over the weekend, she said if we're not symptomatic, you know, strongly suggests wearing masks, but if we're not symptomatic, we're okay. When we start showing symptoms, we should immediately go home.
Go home.
Stay there, do your ten days, get tested.
So will we come to any resolution? Are we doing this per office?
And if, I would like, in twenty twenty dash nine, it's still in place, so if an employee gets contracted, then they know how they're paid and how they're, much time they need to be home.
Yep. I would like to know which bathroom you guys would like to designate, or Turo has some idea which one might need some additional cleaning? Whatever, designate for public, you mean? Yes, downstairs. Are you guys okay? Okay. That way Diane knows who to direct or where to direct people when they. Upstairs, the clerks and the courts use that. Yep, they do.
So secondary roads, you're pretty much appointment only, wear masks, did you get the appointment?
Usually the appointment is the person sitting outside calling in.
Okay.
I mean, that's usually what it is. They, we haven't been limiting traffic in, um, most of our flow in traffic right now is people trying to get driveway extensions, they're done with harvest. We've been letting them in, we've just been asking them to, I, I think there's a sign on our door, due to positive cases, we're requiring masks inside, and everybody's been good with, with wearing masks. So we haven't had anybody complain. Some people have slid their paperwork under the door and don't even bother coming in.
You're pretty, you're pretty comfortable with yours.
I'm comfortable with our.
Okay, LEC?
So, like I was saying earlier, we, we implemented a mask policy for all employees last week, Wednesday, or Thursday, excuse me. Um, we've done some limiting with the jail, um, because we still have inmates who have, or defendants who have been scheduled to be admit time, which is supposed to serve jail time. We've suspended that for the time being, but we still are allowing people to come in and get fingerprinted if they need to for like jobs and stuff like that, but we're making them walk around the building and come into the door that goes directly into the locker room, they quick get fingerprinted and it's right back out the door, and then we make them wear a mask before they come in. So that's the way we've been handling that. But we still do have others, um, like sex offenders, for example, where our deputy who does the sex offender registry, he's, because he has to do that at his desk to fill out the forms and stuff. I guess we've, we're gonna, we've been talking about exploring a different option to try to do that, because he needs to also then print out paperwork when he's done. So that's why he's been doing it at his desk, cause then he has access to his printer to be able to get them the paperwork that they need before they leave. But, um, I guess we can research, maybe see if there's a different way we can try to do that without actually bringing them into the building. But I think for us, our intention is to leave the lobby open, because we have people, you know, in an emergency, they have to come in.
Yeah.
But as far as bringing them past the doors, past the lobby would be.
Well, you, you have the protocol at the LEC that everybody that's in there is separated anyway, from the general walk-in public, so you have that benefit.
Yeah, otherwise, as far as the employees, like, you know, they have to wear a mask unless they're sitting at their desk and they're at least six feet separated from everybody else, and they can take it off if they're typing a report or whatever, but. Same thing, as soon as they get up. that, as soon as they get up, start walking around, they gotta have the mask back on.
You kind of handle things accordingly, already kind of like Secretary Rhodes has, and now that we've got the courthouse situated, if everybody's comfortable with that?
And I guess the only other thing we did is we tried to have jailers use just one entrance and exit when they come and leave work, and the same thing with PD officers and dispatchers to use one, and then the deputies, so we're trying to limit the amount of cross-contamination, you know, by door handles and stuff, you know, and actually it's helping it out, but.
It don't hurt, it's a good idea, keep it kind of like the bathroom deal, keep it segregated to, to that degree. Are you keeping up okay with the cleaning, you got enough?
Maybe just step up the handrail wiping, you know?
You should be just wearing.
Yeah.
The thing everybody has to remember is, I mean, I don't think he says that, um, you know, so if they have symptoms, they go home, but people are asymptomatic if they get positive, we don't help them, so, everybody needs to be very mindful of that, and masks, hand washing, all that is very, very, very important for a point.
Yeah, because there's no way you can see if somebody's asymptomatic.
He brought up a, a good point that I was considering, you have been here on the policy, that there'd be no county travel, what about personal travel, is the county involved in any of that, or don't we have the right to do that?
From an HR perspective, Sandy, can we touch that?
Um, yes, I mean, you can't do that, um, if it includes, you can also put the stipulation on it as a new trial, although there's two weeks for it, you can also do that.
Does it depend if it's out of state, or does it depend where? I mean, surely you can go to another county, we saw. It can't be.
You're, you're.
From what I, from what I've heard, from what I've read, they said if you leave the state, um, I know Illinois is doing that, when we were interviewing for, um, our CEO or, I guess, um, Illinois had a saying, if she, um, if she wants that insurance, she wants to be, that was she, Iowa, I'm interviewing.
They need to refix that one, her name.
Except for the private business though, too, so.
Right.
If, I, I'm not for sure, you know, private business, first, yeah, you got title, public and all that kind of stuff, so, that was totally a, so we need to ask, I mean, somebody that knows that a lot better than I do.
Okay.
That's gonna be an awful tough one, that, there, again, it's kind of like Peggy just mentioned.
I, I allow it, just take your fellow employees into consideration, don't go places where you know it's bad.
Yeah.
So, what if they do? I mean.
Watch them.
Exactly, is it self-quarantine?
It's also something that isn't, it isn't like the chicken pox, or the mumps, or measles, that you can look, we could be exposed at one of the grocery stores, or maybe at the elevator, or.
I mean, you can't, it's not a perfect system, you just try, you just try to do your best.
I just want it to, exposure.
All you can do is what you can personally do for yourself, what works for you and your family, you know, like you said, the grocery store, you can get it, so you can do the pickup, you know, great, if you can't, well, you know, that's understandable too, that's what we can do, it's been working really well, grocery pickup and things like that, so.
Well, I was at HABE last night, there was more kids getting groceries, running up and down with their old checkers, it's amazing how many people are doing that.
Yeah.
Well, this.
They're doing checkup.
Yeah, they're having, they got their orders, and they're running up and down, getting there, filling them.
Yeah.
I'd have to get a little more organized.
Well, and then for us, I'd suggest, if we want to keep meeting in person, it's up to you guys and gals, but as far as extracurricular, people in the audience, it's all gonna be by Zoom, because that's, goes back to all of our discussion, we got people in and out, we don't know who, that actually worked pretty well, uh, previously, if we have someone that needs to visit with us, that we have the Zoom connection, we're gonna go that route.
Just let Peggy know before Monday morning at eight.
Right.
Because sometimes we have a little meltdown when we're trying to get fourteen people hooked up to our computer, so if you want to know if Friday I'm gonna attend the meeting by Zoom.
It's just like having anything on the agenda, if it's a genized item, and it's someone that like, well, just use the nurse that came in this morning as an example, would like to present you with some information, okay, fine, but you're gonna do it via Zoom.
Right, I'm good with that.
If you want to continue to meet in person, and this is all fluid, because hopefully this is as bad as it's gonna be, and we're taking steps, steps to mitigate it, not getting worse, and, and hope it gets better, but, I mean, we're gonna keep this in effect for foreseeable future, you know, and, uh. I don't know.
The health commission's gonna get work.
And, yeah, to Sandy's point, uh, you know, everyone here listens to the news to some degree, and the talk of Thanksgiving and what's gonna happen with the people getting together, I will just state publicly, when we get past that, if it is especially worse, we may have to take more drastic steps than what we've done right now.
So, it's okay that, like, if I want to walk?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Put a sign on.
I think we will do that.
Yeah, this is kind of a per-office, what we're dressed for them. Their protocol.
We share a copier, is the problem.
That's right.
Well, you'll have to fight them off.
You'll, you'll have to call for an appointment then.
Yeah. You keep up the good work? Yeah, I do, yeah, anything on the gen board, sorry.
Like the mail, it's.
No, that's okay.
The tab?
Like the mail is, you just go in there.
Lock it, maybe.
Like if you lock their offices.
Linda? Linda?
If you.
I'll go, I have a mail for you.
Mail.
Like, do you want me to place it somewhere else, and you grab it, or step in there, or?
Step in.
Okay.
I mean, step in and deliver it, but, you know, I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe not locking physically, and just put a sign on that we're close to the public and to call, and that way.
Will you shake down?
She can come in and make copies, and you can deliver whatever you need to, that sort of thing, 'cause, you know, it's stuff that has to be.
Yeah, because every time you, if someone knocks the door, you get up and you open the door.
Yeah, I need it, so, yeah.
Does that, I believe, everybody's, slightly clearer than mud on all this?
Yeah, it's always, I guess.
And like I said, this is, this isn't fluid, I mean, it, it is possible, I don't want to be.
Making might have to change.
Negative.
Yeah.
But it is, it's, like I said, to Sandy's comment, it, it is possible that we have to take a little more restrictive action, but for right now, let's at least go this step. Awesome, Peggy said something about opening off the bat, you, you know, whatever you're comfortable with, whatever you think makes it work better in your office. So, well, if there's nothing else, I think we've got it hashed over.
Sure, if you need anything, you'll have to get ahold of, through Peggy or something, if you're running low on something, and we can help, try to locate it, let us know.
Some people were asking about masks, I told them we already ordered them, they should be coming just anytime.
Yep.
Your right-hand man follow, is he getting through this okay, is he getting in?
We're good.
You guys are good?
We're good, we're good.
Excellent.
I like the idea when they said the court system, and that was maybe before you were here, Archero, that everybody put the garbage.
Out the door.
I mean, we have garbage cans like our, I don't know, six or seven of them, we can certainly collect them at the end of the day and put them outside the door and keep, if, I mean, it's up to you.
That's what the clerk of court is doing, I don't want.
And I don't know why we couldn't all do that.
Yeah.
Is, is it more comfortable for you if you don't have to come in? We could put our garbage out.
I'm comfortable, but I think about your offices, if you want me to go in there, just friend with me, so.
Again, so you're comfortable, what's it like with the recorders, office is comfortable?
Run your office how you think it should be.
Yeah.
Well, he's in, and, of course, I guess that doesn't matter, but he's just kind of like a little bee that's in and out.
Yeah.
Well, if we're good with all this.
Well, if he sets your garbage out tonight, and he sets them off there tomorrow.
I already wanted to say, I'm gonna my house.
He does a good job.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody, and we'll move forward.
Appreciate all your help.
Any input? All right, well, you got in on the discussion, Ben, so now we can move on to more technical matters.
Yeah.
I'm giving up. You did fine, I don't think that was written on.
So, I've got a couple items on the agenda for today, uh, the first item is to approve the final pay voucher to Peterson Contractors for the States Avenue Box Culvert, uh, this is the final routine for that project, forty-three hundred oh three seventy-three cents.
Go ahead.
Uh, this, we will run through the next claims period, which I think is next week, so we can prove it.
Oh, everything's all done on that now, right?
Everything's completed, we need to, uh, make sure that the grass that we cast out there is going to establish, we'll have to check that this spring, but, uh, we did go out there with a hydro seeder and, and put a first coat on anyway.
I see your rip rap, they used a lot more.
They used a lot more rip rap than.
What we thought, huh?
What we thought they would, yeah, so, uh, they used four side dump loads, where we figured they were gonna use four dump truck loads.
Oh, do you think it was excessive, or?
I, I think it was, it was more than what we probably needed, uh, it was miscommunication between me and the foreman.
Oh, okay.
When he said four loads, I was picturing.
Dump trucks.
Dump trucks, so.
All right.
Well, I think if that's all there is, then that's, we can get by with it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the final pay voucher to Peterson Contractors for an amount of four thousand three hundred and three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Thanks, I can.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, carried. I have an application for work in the right of way.
The second, uh, item that I've got is an application to work in the county right-of-way with Steve Lumindahl, uh, Steve's got in last Thursday, I believe, they're looking at putting in a private pile crossing between his property and Dave Welter's on one hundred and sixty-fifth, which is the road that we did the railcar and turned into a Level B. Because we, because that is a, a Level B and a lower standard of road, I did allow him to use dual wall across the road as opposed to, uh, our standard requirement of concrete, he's not requesting reimbursement from the county, um, uh, their, their contractor, Scott Mamsky is out there working on the south side in, uh, Dave Welter's property right now, and, and their plan is to try and come across that gravel road with either a ten or a twelve-inch line, um, talking to Steve, it sounds like it's a good project for them, and not charging anything to us, so it's okay with us.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve the work in the right-of-way for Lumindahl.
And I'll, second.
Okay.
Being that's not a Class A, we don't have to go under the same protocols as the other.
That's kind of the way that I felt, uh, I mean, our policy doesn't really spell out how we handle these crossings on a Level B road.
Okay.
Oh, that sounds good, well, I've got first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved.
I've got another application to work in the county right-of-way with Midland Power, this is to bore under one hundred and ninetieth street, just west of Herman Hawke's place, to the new acreage that they're constructing for his daughter, um, Midland Power's great to work with, no problem with deaths or anything like that, so, I, I don't see a problem with their application.
I make a motion to approve the application for Midland Tower.
Outside.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed, approved.
The last item is why I brought Dave with me, uh, approve slash deny a ten driveway extension request, um, we talked about this briefly last week, um, Gary made it come in and requested, uh, ten or eleven driveway extensions, all of them to be a hundred foot in length, uh, as you know, with our current policy, anything over fifty feet, we have to initially deny, uh, we still go out and inspect the site, and then it has to come to you for, for approval, uh, Dave went out and looked at all of them last week, and I guess, do you have any issues with any of them?
Uh, the only one I had a question on is there's one right across from each other.
On each side of the road?
Mm-hmm.
I can put one inside.
One feet.
Yeah.
So, there's already two driveways.
One on each side of the road.
Any often extension on each one?
Yes.
Other than they're across the road from each other, is there any issue otherwise?
Well, it, it creates a, a drainage issue, uh, it could create a soft spot in the road or a frost.
Could you miss?
Because there's no place, you've got a lot of leaves, the road.
Water to drain away.
There's no place to push the.
Both sides, yeah.
Typically, our, our bad roads are our frostwell roads, or roads that have little to no ditch.
Yeah, and we've, we've been out, and there've been many, many trips out on the road, and you guys have pointed that out, and you can see that, where the ditches are full of dirt, the road's crap, typically.
So, is there any way that he would, could move it to one into the field or the other?
We can touch base with him.
Uh, if you look at it, that's.
Which one is it?
I have them highlighted.
Yeah, I mean, we got one with red ink on it, and, which, so which one is it, here?
It should be, uh, it should have been your first and second one, and I have it kind of colored and highlighted, if you look at the one I gave you.
Is this, on the red ink on it?
No.
Okay.
Should be the black and white one.
Okay.
It's on Delaware Avenue, yeah, it's like up in that top corner, and then on your other one over there, on the second page, I already highlighted.
Oh, I see, yeah, first two pages, they.
Yeah, but he's also got a bunch of others along, along there. But that was the big one.
I think if you make that explanation, Ben, that.
I mean, that makes sense to me, what you're telling me.
We understand it, I, I don't think Gary's that hard to get along with.
No.
So, what would your recommendation be, Dave, and then maybe one could be widened and the other one can't, or neither?
Or, you know, move one down the roadway, I don't think the one move it, but, because they're straight across from each other.
Would you, would it?
We could just make a stipulation that if it becomes an issue, we'll have to address it at that point.
Or would you?
If you want to approve it.
Would you, I mean, just approve it with the recommendation, just that the one is widened, the other one isn't?
Is this, is this a high area, or is this a low area, or, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know the Delaware that well to know if that's a high spot in there, or if it's a low spot in the.
It's, I don't know, it's close to the top.
Top of the hill.
But it still has pipe in it.
And all these extensions, if pipe was required, pipe is put in.
But, yeah, you've got a list, and there are the ones that have pipe that need to be extended with pipe, um, the way our policy writes is that any driveway over fifty feet, we don't maintain, right, so, if it gets plugged, it's their responsibility to shed them out.
And then he's got some that are like three and a half mile, three and a half, and they'll put that out tomorrow.
Well, I guess the biggest thing is, is when he farms, if he farms in those areas, it still gets them off the road, like we've talked before, when they're farming on that field versus the next field, because if they don't have it on the next field, and they're farming, and they need to load, they're. and they need to load, they're gonna load it on our road. I mean, that's the issue that we...
That's a good point, Bruce, that it does...
I think it works on that, but hurts along the edge of the road, pretty much, I mean.
Now, I mean, depending on the year. Depending on your...
If you have a lot of, you do a lot of guy... And they use the driveways to load the semi.
Yeah, that morning after the rain, a lot of them parked on the road, it was too greasy till it dries off a little bit, and...
Well, that Rymers Trucking guy, when he pulls up and the guy says, "Do you mind if we load on the road?", I'm saying, "If somebody sees me, what the hell am I supposed to say?" Uh, "I'm not supposed to be doing it."
Well, as long as you're not blocking the road for somebody else to get by, it's, it's not an issue.
But still, we're working on the shoulders with the bigger equipment and the weight, you know, the weight on there, and it pushes and mashes stuff out, it's been wet, and got the whole...
Uh, I mean, I'm fine with it. He put the stipulation in there that if it does become a problem, one of them's gonna come out.
Yeah, maybe both of them, maybe.
Yeah, I think when we put in these extra wide driveways like that, if we start getting frost oils in that spot...
That will have to address it.
Have to address it.
Yeah.
And put that in, put that in the permit on that, those, those, these extra wide ones, I think if you put that writing in there for it creates a frost oil, it might have to be addressed later.
Of course, no concern.
I'm, I'm good with that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta think of the overall state, you got the whole road.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, like Rick said, make sure it's just noted that if there's any of those spots that, that could become a concern, then you can't say, "Well, you let me put it in, now you want me to take it out." Well, no, we said if it causes a problem...
Yeah.
Well, that's it.
And as you know, roads are notorious frost oil roads, they just, every year are a problem. Because certain roads are always good, certain roads are always bad.
Mm-hmm.
Not like all of a sudden, magically, a frost oil pops up.
No, I mean, the reason that we initially set a fifty foot wide driveway was because anybody that's driving a semi that turns from one road to another does that in less than fifty feet, that they ought to be able to pull into the driveway. But when you're using the driveway for staging, it's different than it being just a field lane or a field access.
Because I notice he's not rocking the whole driveway.
No, he doesn't rock.
So...
These are all on secondary roads?
Yeah.
That was the only other thing, just...
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the driveway extensions with the note in there about the, uh, if it causes a problem, they'll...
On the side to side, on the back to back, those two?
I, I would say that on any of them.
Yeah, I, I kind of think we should put that on any of these extra long ones.
Anything over our fifty.
Anything over our fifty, note that in there, if it causes frost oils in the future, maintenance issues, we'll have to reduce them back to the standard fifty.
Yep.
That'll be my motion.
That's my point, I'll second that.
Good.
Okay, we got the first and the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? There you go.
All right. Um, other than that, uh, all of our sand bunkers are full, mixed until, uh, Thursday, so we're ready for snow, hope we don't have to use it. Um, I did send you guys an email Friday, I believe. Um, Bruce F. dropped off a packet of information, uh, to my office when I asked if he had dropped anything off to Peggy or requested a, a hearing for that private tile crossing of theirs. Uh, he said that he hadn't, but he was on his way to Ford Dodge, didn't have time. So I dropped, I took that packet and dropped it off with Peggy Friday afternoon, so. There is some information that they're still waiting to give back. I haven't heard back from their attorney. So I, I guess I don't know anything new or, or pressing on that.
Other than that, there should be no more rehashing of it. Everyone knows what's required, and if the requirements are met, we know to proceed.
Yeah.
We had some signatures from landowners.
Yep, there were some signatures from landowners. Uh, a few of the items were missing. Um, the main one that we're interested in, obviously, is what the cost of secondary roads is going to be. They were still waiting to hear back from, uh, a contractor who was gonna give them a quote for a boring. In the meantime, I reached out to one of our contractors that does a lot of our box culverts, and they told us who their contractor is, which is based out of Ankeny. I talked to him, he got me a quote back, uh, and it was like nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to bore under the roadway.
Yeah, that is too bad.
Um, in the meantime, Harold Trask did do his boring for that permit that we approved here...
My...
Two falls ago.
Oh, yeah, I've got that done.
Yeah, he, uh, he had threw up there a week ago last Thursday, but they were broke down when I stopped by to check out the site. I talked to Harold, and he said that they were rewelding their equipment to try and get things...
All right.
That's good. Is that, so how much reimbursement will he get for that?
Harold's permit was for five thousand, fifty percent up to five thousand.
Okay. And he was, that was fine, they didn't...
Yeah, I mean, that's what he, he signed up for.
And just, and just went under the original permit, which was still in effect, and so he was good to go.
He hasn't come back and asked for anything?
That was the only thing when I read that, I just... Okay.
Right.
Good.
Does not say that he won't come back and barf, that we changed our policy, but the policy that he signed and agreed to, I guess, was...
That's what he's operating under, so that's probably what he, that's what he had to shake out.
All right.
Anything else other than that, fun stuff, Ben?
That's all I've got.
Good enough. So, we got all that through, we got to go to call, let's go to committee reports.
Okay, on Wednesday, end of the dog shelter meeting. I, I showed up a little late and had to leave early, so I'll let Dave fill in on that one. And then Thursday morning, I had, uh, the County Development Association and, you know... They're in that meeting with me, I, we have the school, they talk about what's going on, city talks about what's going on, and I get a little talk of what's going on in the county, and the hospital talks, and Michelle Sawyer, you can see the stress in that woman. She is worried, um, and she's stressed, you know, we gotta tighten up our protocols, as they say. Either the, it isn't really bed numbers, it's staff, keeping the staff available. Because staff get sick, they can't work, so then you can't get patients come through, so that, that was a lot of the conversation.
The bigger the hospital, the harder the staff...
Yeah. It's, it's...
Issues they have.
And, and surrounding hospitals are on, they're calling every day, can you take, can you take people, can you take people, and, and, uh, you know, it's same thing everywhere, it's staff, keeping people at work, so. That's about it.
You have that in LAC meeting, too?
Yeah, oh, that's, that's right, on Monday morning, we had an LAC meeting.
All right.
Yeah, all right.
All right, all I had for the week was, we had mobile food pantry on Wednesday's eleventh, um, numbers wise. Uh, hundred and thirty-seven families, two hundred and seventy-six individuals. Um, twenty-four volunteers were down there, so we kept, got a little chilly towards the end. We had a good guy out there directing traffic. Couple of people that were a little suspect and they're driving. We just ran them down through the, by the old swimming pool, and then along the racetrack, and then they could pick them up, and we had the boxes and save one out there to try to direct the traffic, and a couple, I thought, were gonna take the garbage for the fifty-five gallon drums off, so. Other than that, we got, um, I think we had, what, down to like six or seven boxes when we... Almost got rid of all of it, so that's what we're after, so.
Where do you count all the boxes? They come with the food?
You know what, the food pantry, when they deliver it, and I think they got the boxes, they had bags, so the people don't touch anything. They just pull up, they tell you that they've got three families or whatever in their car, and you give them three portions of what they do. So there's three boxes, three bags, and whatever the meat, and it was chicken this month.
Chicken this time.
And I think the next, uh, date is December, uh, January thirteenth is what I remember here, so...
Bruce, I got one question for you. On the, the local food pantry, how are they doing with donations and stocking of items?
I think they're still holding their own. They have, uh, the churches are still doing...
Right.
Some helping, um, they're still on one day only, unless there's an emergency, they can get a hold of UDMO and, and, uh, um, Thursday is still the day that they're open out there, and it's similar, you just call and say, we're...
They send it out.
Incoming, and they'll bring it out to you, so you don't, they don't have any interaction, um, that was the deal. The other day, the people kept grabbing up, and they'd want to give you your ticket, but this is, we don't want it, you keep it, just to throw it away, so. You don't have any interaction, um, and that's what they're doing upstairs.
They are, they are, I mean, this is, uh, it's always critical throughout the year, but this time of year, they, they do have the supplies, they do have the...
So far, right now, the churches are running an ad for every day, um, put something in your box for whatever. Now, through the twenty-fifth for Thanksgiving, and then on the twenty-fifth, bring it to the food pantry and similar items for Thanksgiving, so. I don't mean...
Question, are our numbers pretty steady? Are they climbing, that are using it?
Uh, it's pretty, I'd say, pretty.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I would tell you this, it's a, uh, and it's no, I'm not downgrading or anything, but it's a slap in the face. It's the rea, uh, reality when you see people that are coming that are, you know, and really appreciative for what they're getting. It's kind of scary.
Well, believe me, the prices have gone way up in the grocery stores, so your dollar don't go as far as you...
Right. Well, and that's the, but we've had awesome people coming and helping, and, you know, this thing, it's similar to the working on the, uh, at the pole, pulling the... People don't understand, you know, you just go in and build, well, there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that you don't understand, that it took how many hours for people to do this, to, for you to walk in.
Yeah.
Same thing. They put it all in boxes, they put it all in bags, and so... Speaking of which, I have a meeting now, ten o'clock.
I think we're good.
So I'm gonna...
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Andy?
Here's my phone call.
The only thing I had left was on Monday the night, um, we had that meeting with Bulling Hills, um, where they went over the, um, resolution and the, um, several animals understanding. I have not gotten the final yet, um, from them, so once I do, I will, um, nail that out to all of them. Um, once we get that and each one of their county, absolutely, for their, um, provided board, once that happens, then we have thirty days to, um, to open those documents. So, um, that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Wednesday, I had the veterans stay at the courthouse here. In the afternoon, I went down to the mobile food pantry and, uh, had all the little groups and saying, "Oh, go Friday." I went down, I took a run to Des Moines to deliver a bunch of stuff, and I stopped at Sam's Club, locked up and masked. Uh, I went down, I was gonna pick up some paper towels, regular household paper towels. There's empty. You couldn't buy toilet paper or paper towels, period.
Again?
Shells was easy empty. And so I ended up getting desperate paper towels, that's what I picked up, but, uh, the old head is starting to crowd around. The gals down there said, "Yes, said last week, would you drop a pickle?" Didn't buy a bottle of jar of pickle?
Didn't know that was a thing.
But anyway...
Should have been cannon more.
Yeah.
You could buy cannon supplies this fall.
Right.
That's crazy.
But, uh, the food pantry went well, I thought, and, uh, then after that, I went over to the animal shelter and had a meeting there. Uh, we discussed a lot of things. We went over what, uh, we got in, there's still supplies that we still need. Uh, I took supplies in there Friday, I think, or Thursday or Friday, I took. Must've been Thursday morning, I went and got some stuff from a guy and took in there. And, uh, there is still something they need. They took in, I think it was twenty-five hundred, over twenty-five hundred dollars in donations the day of their open house.
They, if someone wanted to send a, a check to the animal shelter, who did they make it out to and where do they send it?
Uh, either make it out to Mary Moffett's Animal Shelter or Humboldt County Animal Shelter, and send it, I'm not sure what the address up there is. But there is an address on the building up there, or send it to City Hall in Humboldt, and Travis will make sure it gets up there. As for donations, uh, if they call somebody, we'll meet them up there and take in donations. Call somebody on the board, or drop them off at one of the vet's office. But the shelter is open, they had, uh...
Couple cats.
During the open house, they had four cats, two of them's been adopted, and one other one has been spoken for, but it hasn't been adopted yet. Then they'll have a kitten, a, a small one, a young one. But, uh, they are taking in animals, and I think this week, they should be starting interviews. I think it's tomorrow, they're gonna be interviewing directors' positions. So there's, they've got two or three applications, they're gonna be doing, interviewing. So, it's moving right along, it's looking good. Everything seems to be working out. We gotta get cameras up yet, but, uh, other than that, the light in front of the building, we thought maybe the security light across the street would shine up, light in front of the building, but it don't, it's kind of the dark there, so. But, uh, other than that, everything's going good with it.
Excellent.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, the only official extra meeting I had was the LAC, uh, meeting Monday morning, the ninth. And then just a quick update, uh, on the ongoing project on Drainage District eighteen ditch cleaning there. I, I did check with that a couple times last week, and they're moving right along. So the, the, uh, physical ditch cleaning, obviously, appears with the weather forecast, will get completed.
Yeah. I think Peterson out here on number ten has been doing his lobbying, picking rocks.
Yep, yep, he has done that, and then they moved...
All fixed, I think?
They moved both, well, they had, obviously, one machine all since last year on BD eighteen, and their other machine, they moved up there.
So they're both up there now?
Yep, to, to make sure and get the main ditch done this season, I guess, and that's working out really well, that they're getting that done, because who could trust the weather? I know Ben's been praying it doesn't snow.
Yeah.
It is probably gonna freeze, and it is probably gonna snow at some point, so. Anyway, but that, that's looking really good. They're, you know, they're not done, but they're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel for the clean, the ditch cleaning.
Yeah.
So Peggy, you have some, anything, though, that we talked about?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll make a move, a motion to adjourn now.
Second. Any discussion? Dave say, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.